Okay, good afternoon.
Sorry, Josh, no, we gotta have you in the call roll first.
Okay. Open it before we do that.
Joshua Friedman.
Here.
Kathryn Newland. Anne Darling. Absent. Michelle Crips.
Here.
Warren McKenzie.
Present.
Jason Mariewski.
Here.
Danielle McCarty. Danielle?
Here.
Thank you. Darcy Van Ness. Absent. Okay, now you can start, Josh.
Okay, good. There you go.
All right, good afternoon, zoning Board of Appeals, meeting of the Town of Waterford is now in session this 13th day of August 2020 at 3:00 PM. All decisions of the Board are final in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section 8-8B. Any person agreed by any decision of the Board may take an appeal to the Superior Court. Appeals shall be commenced in accordance with the Section 8-8, F, and G within 15 days of the date of notice of the decision was published as required by general statutes. We're doing no appointments, everybody, this is a full forum. Is that right?
No, we do have one alternate that you'll need to see for Anne Darling. Did he do this one?
We're gonna do Jason, who are we doing? He's the alternate.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we're gonna, we will appoint Jason Mariewski for Anne Darling.
Great, and then you'll need to read the Zoom statement next.
This is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being audio recorded. Please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule of this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting. Public comment will only be accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The Chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for public comment. Public comments will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the Chair. When the hearing opens, you may give your comments in the following manner. Use the raise your, raise hand feature in Zoom and make the call drop. Before the hearing closes, we will ask for any comments from people who are only able to join by phone or unable to use the raising feature. Multiple people attempt to speak at once, the staff will help moderate. State your name and your address for the record. If multiple people wish to speak, the meeting moderator will interview you individually. Please listen for instructions. We appreciate your attendance in this meeting. Should you have any questions about this process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 after the meeting has ended. Thank you. So, ready to do the first application?
Yeah, well, we need to approve the August 6th meeting minutes first.
You did all that, no? We didn't do that last?
No, the August 6th, the meetings minutes from last week.
Oh, okay. I guess I didn't pull it up. We have a motion to approve the August 6th meeting minutes.
I move that we approve it. This is Michelle.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. All right, so now I read the minutes. I may read the applications. Okay, application Z-20-2. Appeal of Ryden LLC, owner and applicant, King Monaco LS, agent at 52R Millstone Road West, R20 Zone. Variances are requested from zoning regulations 4.4.1, front yard setback variance of 37 feet to allow a front yard setback of 13 feet. Section 4.4.2, side yard setback variance of 12 feet to allow a side yard setback of 8 feet. Variances are required to construct single-family dwelling as proposed plan entitled zoning location survey property of Ryden LLC for property located at 52R Millstone Road West created June 1st, 2020. Anybody making presentation, or where are we going?
Yep, that's Jim.
Okay, Josh, can you hear me and see me okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right. As you know, this was, this was heard about a month or so ago, there was an error in the advertising for the variances that were required, so it was re-advertised. I'll go over a couple of things again, it's, you know, I'm sorry, my name is Jim Bernardo, I'm a Lance of Air, my address is 102A Spithead Road here in Waterford. I'm representing the Wadsworth family, who is the Ryden LLC, the owner of the property at 52R Millstone Road, Millstone Road West, I'm sorry. Property is owned R20, it's served by municipal water and sewer, and it's not located in a special flood hazard area. There are wetlands located adjacent to the property on the adjacent lot, and this lot has, this piece of property has a, falls within 100-foot upland review area. There's currently a 2,300 square foot barn on the property with no primary residence. There was a previous, previously there were pre-existing non-conforming residences and garages which are demolished, and those locations have been documented on prior surveys. I believe Jill included as an exhibit the Public Act 17-39. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but just quote from the very last portion of it, which is page 5 of 5. It says, "The demolition or destruction of a non-conforming use, building, or structure shall not by itself be evidence of such property owner's intent to not reestablish such use, building, or structure." And that's important because, as I said, there were, there was a garage and a house on that piece of property that were located approximately two feet south of the property line, which are pre-existing non-conforming. And so by the statutes and by the Public Act, they could build on that same foundation or those same locations, which again have been documented in prior surveys. In addition, the...
It's on the other one.
Oh, I'm sorry. We okay, Mark?
Yes, sure, go ahead, Jim.
So the applicant is proposing 42 by 38, three-bedroom home with a single-car garage underneath. There's gonna be an elevated deck up to the second floor because of high groundwater, we can't have any building area located below the, basically below the ground surface. So we're putting the garage underneath with the elevated living quarters. There was a recent exhibit which was submitted, I believe, after... Mark, you holding me up or something?
No, 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 I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
End up, I didn't know if you're, okay, there was an exhibit 16 which was submitted by a neighbor, and I also believe, I think she's on the phone. That would be this Cleary, who's at 50 Millstone Road, that's the property just to the north of this. She has concerns about some privacy in her backyard. First of all, there's an existing stockade fence that runs along the property line. Mark, I'm not sure if you can pull up the site plan, please?
Okay, sure can, hold on.
Can you see the screen that we're sharing?
I can, I can only see you two.
Okay.
I can only see Bill and Mark, yeah.
There we go.
There we go, okay.
There we go.
Okay, so, Mark, can you show on there the two dotted structures which were the previous locate, the house location, the house and garage location?
I will zoom in.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we've identified those, right, yeah, that dotted structure by the stone wall, there was, there was a home located there previously which has been demolished. And then up to the left-hand side of that same view, Mark, there's the garage, which is shown dotted in as well. And then that line which is running primarily parallel with the north property line, that line with a slash going through it. That's, that's a stockade fence, keep going up, yep, there's a stockade, six-foot stockade fence located there. And again, I would refer you back to the Public Act 17-39, that would allow the applicant to build on those same footprints. So what we've tried to do is at least try to pull it away from the property line somewhat in order to give them somewhat of a backyard. And I also understand that the neighbor to the north is concerned about the height, and I also refer you to the zoning compliance chart. We're allowed to go to 35 feet in the zone, and our, and our house, and our structure's only at 22 feet, so we are considerably lower than what's allowed in the zone. So the variances, again, that we need for, we're requesting are the variances of 37 feet for the Section 4.4.1, which is the front yard setback, to allow a front yard setback of 13 feet. That's due to that crazy configuration of the front property line, that's the measurement to the deck. And again, the deck is needed because we need to get somehow access to that upper floor where the, where the living area is. It's a single-floor ranch, and that's gonna be the living, living space level is up there. And then we are also requesting a variance of 12 feet from the Section 4.4.2, which is the side yard, and we're providing an eight-foot, and a 20-foot is required. Again, the hardships here, it's the unusual configuration of the existing property boundaries make it difficult to build on it. You can see that little dotted-in triangle in the middle of the, of the lot there, that's the only permissible area that would be allowed by your zoning requirements. We have the non-conforming structure of the barn with no primary residence, so that will be bringing the property into conformity with the zoning regulations by having a, a residence, at least a company, an accessory structure. And we have the restriction of the 100-foot wetlands upland review area from that property located per tell. Those are inland wetlands that were previously delineated on the other side of the stone wall. The 100-foot regulated area crosses our property, so we've tried to accommodate that as much as possible. And again, in addition, under the Public Act 1739, those structures appear to be one or two feet off the property line, so we're making them least more conforming than what was there before. And so that, that's it for my presentation. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
This is Jessica Cleary, is it the time where I'm not allowed to speak or?
It would be, at this point, we'd be looking for questions from the Board, and then you can open up Josh to the audience.
Does anybody on the Board have any questions? No? Any, any questions from the public?
Yeah, sorry. So I just, does that have to be a form of a question, or can I respond to the comments that were made by the gentleman that just spoke?
Okay.
Yep.
She needs to state her name and address, please.
Right, let me say your name.
Sure, my name is Jessica Cleary, and I'm property owner of 52 Millstone Road, I mean, I'm sorry, 50 Millstone Road. So I just wanted to clarify that the statement that we provided, which we, back to the height, there was no objection to the height of the structure. The, the comment was about that the living, main living area and the deck are on the second level of the structure, which means the stockade fence that you referred to, which I do agree is there, does not provide any privacy because the main living area is up above that level. And also, I wanted to ask a question because I'm not that familiar with the, you know, zoning laws and regulations and statutes, obviously, as you are. But the previous structure that was in that similar location was a garage, not a main primary residence. The primary residence was much farther back on the property and therefore didn't have as much of an imposition on the privacy of our backyard. So does that factor into the decision that's, that's made? Because you're changing the, the use and significantly the privacy in doing so.
I don't have an answer to that.
Jim, can you address comments?
Actually, I would, that's a good question, and I would defer that back to you, and my limited knowledge of the statute, if there was a structure there that was a garage before, more forward, could they put a house on that same location based on that Public Act? Do you have any experience with that, Mark, or anybody in the staff?
Okay, yeah, Mark, Retevia Sound Planner, I have, the way the statute reads is that any non-conforming structure can be rebuilt in the same footprint. Whether that, whether that structure was used as a garage, or whether that was used as a principal building, it doesn't, statute does not address that. It only, it only addresses occupation, not use.
That was my understanding as well, but I, I needed some clarification, I wasn't exactly certain.
So you, what are you saying? House could be put where the, the barn is now, or something more centered in the lot?
No, Josh, there was a garage, and Mark, if you can pull up that site plan one more time?
Sure.
Looking at the site plan, I don't, I have a hard time figuring out where the garage was.
We'll try to point that out again for you here. Okay, so, the, the garage is that dotted, there was, there was... There, okay?
I get it, yeah.
Way in that back upper right-hand corner was where the house was located, but the statute does not distinguish between whether it was a residence or whether it was a accessory structure. It just says that we could build right there on that footprint, that same size, same-sized structure on that same footprint. And again, that would fall within the statute, so at least we're trying to accommodate somewhat of a yard setback and, you know, maneuverability around where the barn's located and a setback from the wetlands, and we kind of tried to balance that with where we chose to put the house.
Right.
This is, this is Warren McKenzie. Could I just, could you pull up that exact state statute and read it for us in its entirety, just the one paragraph or two paragraphs it would be?
Mark, do you have it there as, as an exhibit? I know we, I requested it late in the day, so you may not have had a chance to take a look at it, so apologize for that.
Hold on. Okay, Warren, it's several pages. Okay, but the pertinent part of the statute is the highlighted end. And it's referring to zoning regulations. Such regulations shall not terminate or deem abandoned a non-conforming use, building, or structure unless the property owner of such use, building, or structure voluntarily discontinue such use, building, or structure. And such discontinuance is accompanied, is accompanied by an intent to not reestablish such use, building, or structure. The demolition or deconstruction of a non-conforming use, building, or structure shall not by itself be evidence of such property owner's intent to not reestablish such use, building, or structure. Oops, I'm sorry, you were reading that, I'm sorry.
Is there, is there any other statements or comments about this? Not sure what happened here. We've got the, we've got the statute up on the screen.
Yep, we did.
Has the question been answered of the resident in 50? She's still on?
I am here, I, I don't think that the, what you just read addressed anything about the initial use versus the new use. It's obviously very different in this situation, so, obviously, we, for our letter, we're uncomfortable with it. So, I don't know what else I have to say further.
So, I have a...
Wait, hold on, hold on, Kathy. You want, talking to the resident, you understand that they, they have a right to build a house there, like, up to 35 feet, I think, because they're building a 22-foot tall house. In terms of privacy... 22, whether it's, whether the main residence on the first floor or second floor, you're gonna see over a fence. You understand that?
No, I think it's very different.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
So, if, if I understand this correctly, this is Kathy Newland on the, the Board. The front square that we were talking about was a garage, but the rear square was an actual house. So it's not changing the use at all because there was a, a single-family house there at one time, just not... The, the garage location was closer to the front line than the house was. Am I correct in, in understanding all that, Jim?
Yes, that is correct, and the question I had asked staff just previously was, does it say that you could rebuild in the same spot as long as it was a garage, and you can rebuild in the same spot as long as it was a house? And the statute, as he just read it, does not say that, so they could, my understanding, and their staff's understanding, is that we could take, where, where the garage was located before, and we could build a house on that same, at that same location. The type of use, the type of use is, is not defined, it's, if there was a structure there, you could build another structure in the same spot.
Right.
But to me, when I looked at the, the graph, it didn't look like it was in exactly the same spot.
Nice move.
Can I, want me to address that, Josh?
Yeah.
The house is not in the exact, in the exact same spot. What we've done is we've tried to, you know, there was about a one-foot side yard before where the old structures were, and we've tried to at least pull it over an additional six feet to get the, give an eight-foot side yard behind the, the new house. So, no, we are not trying to occupy the same footprint or the same location, but we're just trying to make it better than what was there before, and do pull it off the line and make it more in compliance with the zoning requirements.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on this issue that was asked?
So, this is Jessica Cleary, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just don't understand the interpretation. If the statute is silent, why that's interpreted to be an allowance? Because I necessarily, silence doesn't necessarily mean approval from my experience.
Can I, can I just say something super quick? With all due respect, we're not here to discuss state statutes per se, but we're trying to determine a hardship and whether or not the hardship expressed in the application would allow such a change in our zoning laws. So could we get what that hardship is exactly red, and could we just briefly touch on that?
Sure, I can read you the, the three hardships that we're, we are claiming, is that the unusual configuration of the property boundaries does not permit a reasonable use of the land under the current zoning regulations. With the current zoning setback requirements, the only area left that would comply with your zoning regulations is that little dotted-in triangle there in the middle. Okay, so that, that's number one. We have a 50-foot rear yard requirement, 50-foot front yard requirement, a 20-foot side. You put all those together, and all you have left is that little triangle, so that's the number one hardship. There's currently a non-conforming accessory structure, which is the barn, which is typically not, an accessory structure is not typically allowed on a property without having a primary residence. So we are actually making that in compliance with the regulations by putting a residence on the same lot as an accessory structure, so it would bring that in compliance, more in compliance with your zoning regulations. And in addition, we have the upland, under-foot upland review area from the wetlands, which we're trying to maintain a suitable distance from that, from the wetland setback in order to accommodate inland wetlands regulations. And so that's the other issue we're dealing with, is a wetland setback put a hardship on this property as far as developing it in accordance with the regulations.
Any, any further discussion on this issue?
Is there a reason why the new structure couldn't be built where the old primary house structure was, since there's already an established non-conformant there?
To that, you just said, because it's, it's, there's a 100-foot setback from the wetlands, there's a line across the middle of this plan that shows that they're actually encroaching on that 100 feet a little bit, is that right, Jim?
That's correct, and, again, that, that old building was one foot off the property line, two feet off the property line, it was, you know, we're, we're just trying to bring something in more, more in compliance with the regulations, and I, you know...
And the old structure was 100% in the wetlands, correct?
Not in the, I'm sorry, not in the wetlands, but in the wetlands upland review area.
Upland review area, okay.
Okay, so you've got a corner, right now you have a corner of the house, very small corner of that, but... I, I had a que...
We could pull it out of the wetlands upland review area, but we would reduce that front yard setback, you know? Like another eight feet, so that's why we, we placed it where we did. And the deck is placed at 13 feet, which is about what the front yard setback was for that garage before, so that's why we, you know, established it in that location. We didn't come any further forward than that existing, from the front yard setback than that existing, sorry, that previously existing garage.
Right. Any more discussion on this issue?
No, just to, just to clarify, the, this application, the plan had been reviewed by Maureen Tresferal, our environmental planner. So the encroachment in the upland review area, she found was not, was not significant enough toward to go to Conservation Commission. So she was, she was satisfied, the Conservation Department was satisfied with the encroachment into the upland review area.
Okay. Do you have a discussion on this issue?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have one more question. So I, I just don't understand, I understand you gave me the reason that there's wetlands back there where the original house was, but I thought what you just read to me earlier was that if there is an established non-conformant that you could rebuild in that same manner. So I don't understand why the situation doesn't apply where the previous house location was, but it does apply where the garage was.
I don't know that I can answer that. I'm not quite sure I understand what her question is, she...
She said that...
We could either build where the old house was, or build where the old garage is.
Because it's non-conforming in the old space, it's also non-conforming in the upland wetlands review area, so why can't it be built there? Even, because you can build a non-conforming, if it was pre-existing. Is it, is that, does that statute, maybe the question is, does that statute pertain to just the setbacks and the zoning and not the wetlands regulations?
Yeah, yeah.
Both? Yeah.
Yeah, the statute applies to zoning regulations.
Zoning, but it doesn't, does it apply to the wetlands regulations?
No, it does not.
Oh, so that's the answer to her question, that you'd have to do, yeah, you'd be then asking for another variance through the wetlands to build in that spot, is that correct? And then you're increasing the non-conformity. Does that sound right, Mark?
That does, that does, you would not, right, right, because that, the non-conforming that was established by the previous house and garage just applies to zoning setbacks and zoning regulations.
The statute that was written, that we, that we read applies to zoning, but not to, not the environmental...
That's correct, that's correct.
...regulations that in terms of whether you can build there again or not, even though it was non-conforming and there was something there. So you're trying to get away from that, and trying to move less, less non-conforming from the, from the environmental regulation. So, and, and the town, town, you say that environmental planner has approved or said this is legitimate enough, legitimate enough, small, small, don't need to do it any further.
That's correct, she didn't, she didn't find an impact negatively... That's correct. She didn't, she didn't find an impact, negative impact from where the house was going to be located.
Your question?
Yeah, thank you.
That helped? Okay. Any other questions on this issue or statements? I had a question just for Jim. The maximum allowable coverage on the lot, you listed it's 12%, or 25% in your, 12%. Does that include barn that's, that's pre-existing?
I'm sorry, was, I got cut out there. What was the last part of it?
Your, your calculation for coverage of the lot is 12%. Maximum allowed is 25%. Does the barn, in your calculation, is the barn included in that coverage?
Yeah, yes. Yep, yeah, that's, because that's included as, as building coverage, correct.
Okay, thank you.
The lot's almost 30,000 square feet and the house is only 27 by 42, so I don't even know how many square feet that is.
You're half of the allowable, basically.
Yeah.
You're half allowable square foot coverage in the lot. Or less than that. All right, that answered my question. Any other questions? Is there anybody in the, in the public who want to speak in favor of this application? Anybody want to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the public who wants to speak against this application? Anybody want to speak in favor of the application?
So, yes, I'm, I'm not sure how the proceedings work, but that's what was my intent, this Jessica Cleary.
Do you have anything more to say than you, than you previously stated, or we understand you're not in favor of this application?
Nope, I think everything has been stated. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's no more comments from the board? And none, none from the public? Move to, make a motion to close this, perhaps somebody make a motion to close this hearing? Somebody want to close the hearing? I can't hear you, Kathy.
We don't normally make motions to close the public hearing. We just close the public hearing.
I'm rusty at this, so, okay. So, I move to close the public hearing on application. Z dash 20 dash two. Okay, done on that? Now we're going to review application Z dash 20 dash. Application Z, ZBA dash 20 dash three. Appeal of Michael Kepsky and Don Hussey Kepsky, owners and applicant. And James Bernardo, LS agent at 25 Riverside Drive, R20 Zone. Variance is requested from zoning regulations section 4.4.1, front yard setback variance of 10 feet to allow for front yard setback of 40 feet. Section 4.4.2, side yard setback variance of eight feet to allow a side yard setback south of 12 feet. Section 4.4.2, side yard setback variance of eight feet to allow for a side yard setback north of 12 feet. Variance is required for single family dwelling on proposed land entitled Boundary Topographic Survey property of Michael Kepsky and Don Hussey Kepsky. A property located 25 Riverside Drive, dated April 4th, 2020. The coastal site plan review is required in accordance with the Coastal Management Act. Okay, so we're going to review the PM Coastal first. What do we have for that?
Okay, if you'd like, I'll cover that part of the application.
Okay.
Because of the location of this parcel being, being a waterfront parcel, it falls within the coastal area management zone. Because this, this application also requires variances, then the board, the zoning board of appeals needs to review the CAM Coastal Area Management application as well. And the coastal area management application essentially identifies any impacts to the coastal resources identified on the site through, through the, the construction of the, of the house. And also any, any measures that are taken to mitigate any, any negative impact. I had prepared a written findings and decisions for the, for the coastal area management application for the board to review. It described essentially the, the potential impacts, negative impacts to the coastal resources on the site. Those, those impacts are, can be mitigated and they're temporary in nature. They would occur during, during construction of the house. So essentially my, my findings and recommendations is that the application meets coastal area management guidelines and policies. And so that's pretty much presented to the board. If you have any questions on the, on that aspect of this application, I'd be happy to address them for you.
Is there anybody on the board that has any questions or statements regarding the CAM? So I'm not familiar with the procedure. Do we vote to accept your recommendations?
You do, yes.
So is there anybody who wants to make any statements or, or questions to the CAM review?
This is Warren McKenzie. I would just like to say that the CAM application looks like it's in favor of this project. And I would like to put a motion to vote to accept that.
Okay, do you want to put any stipulations based on the recommendations of the town planner?
Does the town planner have anything to add?
Well, I've, I've incorporated conditions with this, with this app, with this set of findings. And I can, I can go over those briefly. The first, first condition is that erosion control measures shall be provided on the site during construction and for the duration of the project. And until the vegetative cover has been established. That's pretty much boilerplate. The second condition is that no work covered by this permit, including the stockpiling materials, will be conducted west of the proposed silt fence. So that, so all the work is confined upwind of the, of the silt fence. And also that an as-built survey shall be submitted and approved by the zoning official prior to a certificate of zoning compliance or a CO of the house. That's in order to verify that all the improvements have been constructed in accordance with the approved site plan. Those are pretty much boilerplate conditions that are standard on applications. That's it.
Do we vote on the, the CAM part of it now or after the public hearing when we're voting on the zoning rights?
You would, you would vote on the CAM part separately, so you do that now. Because technically the CAM doesn't require a public hearing. So you take care of that first.
That's to be approved, or we can go forward, yeah. So Warren, did you want to add that?
I'm, I mean, as long as the, the town is satisfied that those conditions will be able to be met, I see no problem with that. As long as DEP and environmental agencies don't see an issue, I don't see why we would see an issue.
I just want, it just needs to be added, that's all.
To make that motion that we approve the CAM?
So then, yes, I, I would like to make a motion to approve the CAM as long as the town's conditions are met, given by the town planner.
Right, okay. Can you second on that?
I can.
Any more discussion on this issue? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we now are, we're going to discuss the application variants. Jim, did you want a presentation on that?
Video, okay. All right, everyone can hear me again? Okay, again, my name is, for the record, Jim Bernardo. I'm a Landsever here in Connecticut. My address is 102A Spithead Road here in Waterford. And representing the owners, which are Michael and Don Kepsky at 25 Riverside Drive. Properties owned R20, located on the north and south are single-family residential houses. On the east is Riverside Drive and in the west is the Niatic River. It's located in FEMA flood zones AE, elevation 12, and also zone X. For those of you that are not familiar, zone X is not considered a special flood hazard area. And all development that we're proposing is taking away from markets. There we go. All the work is taking place outside the special flood hazard area. Just reviewed the coastal site plan application as presented by the staff. There's currently a 900 square foot, two-story cottage on the property. The existing cottage is pre-existing, non-conforming with regards to yard setbacks. It's currently required in the zone is a 20-foot side yard. There's currently an 11-foot south side yard and a 13-foot north. Mark, can you kind of outline that dotted line where the old cottage is located? Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Okay, so that's the location of the existing cottage that's there. Is, as you can see, it, it, that requirement's a 20-foot side. And so it's closer to the side yard setbacks than what's required. Mark, if you could scroll up now to the zoning compliance chart, please? Go the other way. Okay, so R20 Zone, minimum frontage is 85 feet. And as you can see, we only have 60 feet on this lot. Actually, I skipped by the minimum lot area, again, which is 20,000 square feet and this is 10,500. The minimum frontage is 85. We have 60 and the minimum width is 100. We also have 60. So the lot itself is a pre-existing, non-conforming with regards to your current regulations. Maximum coverage is 25%. We're proposing 21%. The minimum front yard requirement is 50 feet and we are looking to set that at 40 feet. There actually is a deed restriction in place on this lot, which does not permit building anywhere within 40 feet of Riverside Drive. So that was another restriction that we had to work with. Minimum side yard setback is 20 and we're looking to establish that at 12 feet. The rear yard is 50 feet, which is measured from the mean high water mark of the Niatic River. We're at 51 feet. And in the maximum height, again, allowable is 35 and we're at 28. So we're well below the maximum height that's allowed in the zone. The applicant is proposing 1,920 gross square foot on the floor plan. It's like 1,500 square feet of living area on the first floor. The 1,900 includes the garage, which is a two-car garage. We tried to center the development between the boundaries of the lot, providing equal setbacks on both the north and the south side. The, the roof drainage, we've addressed with some cul-de-sac units, which are going to catch the roof, the first one inch of roof runoff and discharge that into the, into the soil. Real quickly, we, we set that, that's the nearest item to the coastal resource is that cul-de-sac unit, which is an underground infiltration system. We're anticipating all sand there, so I don't think we're going to have any issues with, with runoff, once it gets into that underground storage system. I would like to address some comments in a couple of the exhibits that were sent in. Exhibit number 10 for Ms. Ms. Lawrence, who was the neighbor to the south, and I believe she's joined us on the phone. She made a comment regarding the, the application. There was an error, which was addressed with staff and it was resubmitted. That's comment number one. Number two, she refers to the, the porch on the south side as being not habitable. And that does meet the definition of a building on the town's definition, so that, that would also be considered part of the building. I would like to refer you to Public Act 17 dash 39, which now you're all pretty familiar with, I think. From the previous application. Again, that public act allows them to remove that structure and build on the same footprint. So that building on the side that is part of the porch could also be built on and could also go up, which currently is a one-story building. It could go up to two stories. Mark, were you able to get a couple of photographs that I had put in for exhibits?
Yes.
Which one did I want to show? It says, yep, that one right there. Okay, so that's the, the porch that's on the south side. So that, again, as long as we stayed within that footprint, this, this property owner could go up on that same footprint. And I think that's important because as you get to more of the comments from the same owner, there's some concern about, about privacy. Again, that, under the town's definition, that porch with the screen door is, could go up a second floor. And again, I refer you again back to the zoning compliance chart. We're well below the minimum, the maximum height that's allowed in the zone. Also, Mark, if you, could you pull up the other photograph that I sent to you, one right below it? The property owner, I was out there today because I was curious as what their concerns were. And I, I guess that window that's in the middle and the window that's hidden behind that tall bush are the windows that are a concern for privacy by the neighbor. And again, we could go up in the same footprint, but I, as you can see, I, I think that window is pretty shielded by the vegetation. But anyway, the same applicant, the same property owner was concerned about property values. If you look on your, in the application for the variance, the property at 25 Riverside Drive has an appraised value, and I'm not an appraiser, so I'm going to have to preface it by that, has an appraised value of $430,000 and it's, it's a part of your application package. This is, what Mark's showing there is the appraisal for 27 Riverside at 600 and 650, I think it was. And I'm not sure, I don't agree with the owner next door, when my client paying $400,000 for this land and putting three quarters of a million dollar house on it, how it's going to lower her property values on the adjacent property next door. But that's just my opinion. Again, I'm not an appraiser. I also refer to exhibit 11, which is the adjacent property owner to the north. That property owner is in favor of this. And they go on to say that the, in that second paragraph, last sentence, "The current dwelling is a seasonal college well cottage well past its useful life and an eyesore which devalues the current area and the town of Waterford as a whole and our property." And they feel in the second paragraph, in the third paragraph, it says it would be a vast improvement to the neighborhood. So here's a neighbor to the north who feels it's going to be an asset to the community and an increase in property values. And the owner to the south feels, feels the opposite. The reason, the last comment there from the owner to the south, Ms. Lawrence, she commented about the garage being centered on the lot. The only reason it was not centered was for aesthetics from the street. The owner wants to try to create a sort of courtyard on that north side so that all you don't see is just a garage as you drive down the road. And that's why the, the garage was positioned where it was. As I said, the existing house is located closer than what we're proposing. We're not building any closer than the existing house or cottages on the property. We're looking for a setback for the front yard of, for 10 feet to allow for the garage construction. The, so the variance that we're requesting, Mark's trying to catch up with me for something.
Yeah, slow down, Jim.
Okay, so, all right, so the variance that we're requesting, there's three of them. A variance of 10 yard, 10 feet is required from section 4.4.1, which is your front yard to allow a front yard setback of 40 feet when 50 feet is required. We're also looking for a variance of eight feet from section 4.4.2, which is your side yard requirements to allow a side yard setback on the south of 12. And currently there's an existing 11-foot side yard setback. And the last one would be the same thing, an eight-foot variance for section 4.4.2 for the side yard setback to allow for a side yard setback on the north of 12 feet, when there's currently a 13-foot existing. The hardship again in this case is that the parcel is pre-existing and non-conforming with both regards to frontage, width and lot area. It's approximately half the size that's, that's required in the zone, 80 feet of 85? Eighty feet of eighty-five, eighty-five feet of frontage is required and we only have sixty and the minimum width is a hundred. And again, we only have sixty. So when you enforce a twenty-foot, a twenty-foot side yard really limits the area to where this property can actually be built on. So strict enforcement of the R twenty yard requirements replaces an unreasonable hardship on this substandard lot in this zone. So that's that's it for my presentation. If anyone has any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public?
Yes, this is this is Loris calling. Can you hear me?
Can you say your name louder and and your address?
L O H R S. Mrs. Loris, L O H R S.
Okay, and your address, please?
Twenty-seven Riverside Drive.
Thank you. You want to make a statement?
Yes, there is a garage across the street, a two-car garage, and I don't see the reason for another two-car garage at the at twenty-five Riverside. And also, this garage, everything seems to be on the south side of the house, where on the north side of the house, there's plenty of of privacy at twenty-three Riverside as they have a garage that would create plenty of privacy for their home. So the print that's available does not show where the windows are going to be placed on the south side. And also, you're, that's it for now.
Is there is there a map in this group exhibits that shows the property where the houses are lodged on inside in the spot? In the exhibit or not?
I'm not sure what your question, there's the the notification to the abutters, I think that would show the location of her house and this house, maybe, Mark, that might be the only thing that shows that. And there is accompanying the application, there is floor plan, well, some elevations and some floor plans. Obviously, the owner has not invested in the full set of architectures at this time until, you know, the permits or approvals have been issued for the CAM and the variances. So I'm not sure if that's the question you're asking for, Josh, or the?
Yeah, this is it right here, yeah.
That would be the only thing I have that shows both.
You zoom in on that a little bit? Yeah, so, right. Yeah, so there's a garage to the north. It's closer to the lot, very close to the lot.
Very close, which they had to get a variance for.
Right. Well, so basically.
It creates privacy for twenty-three Riverside where on the south side, there is no privacy whatsoever.
I understand your statement.
And also, the you haven't answered the question on the garage. There is a two-car garage that belongs to this property across the street. So what is the reason for?
There's a two-car garage across the street, is that what you said?
Yes, there is.
Is that is that a separate property or is it just?
Yes, I believe it is.
Two properties? That, Mark? Does it, does it, does it enter, is it a separate lot?
Yes, I believe it's taxed separately, as ours is taxed separately also.
That means it's a separate building lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it doesn't, that doesn't enter into this application at all?
Well, it does because you're trying to get a two-car garage on this side of the house where there's already a two-car garage.
If it's separately, it's it's a separate building lot. It's not, just because two, one person owns two lots doesn't mean it's one, it's one use. But what you have is two building lots. So that lot has its own zoning regulation.
That is not a building lot across the street.
Whether it's a building lot or not, it's two separate lots. It's separate lots. It's not one lot. So anything that's involved is it's not, they're not connected in terms of the variances in the zone. Does that answer your question on that?
No.
No. I don't think I can stay any further than that. Do you have anything else to speak, speak up before we move on?
Who are you talking to?
You, yes.
The owner, the south, south owner? No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, anybody that wants to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody that wants to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody else that wants to speak against this application? Is there anybody that wants to speak against this application? Is there any other?
This is Mrs. Loris and I am against it, so, and I haven't changed.
That's you, okay, that's your statement. Please state state that again with your address, your name and address until we have that. Hello?
Are you, I don't know who you're talking to.
This is Mrs. Law, Miss Loris, Miss, yeah. Say your name. Because we're on a Zoom, it's hard to tell who's who we are.
I know. It was hard to, for me to understand too, who you're asking. Carolyn Loris, twenty-seven Riverside Drive, and I'm against this proposed home or modification to the lot.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other further comment on this public hearing? Okay, the application ZBA dash twenty dash three, public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Okay. So anybody want to take a break before we have a discussion?
Go for it.
Okay. Application Z dash twenty dash two, Field Writing LLC, owner and applicant. Any comments from the board? I mean.
Are we on the the Millstone Road one?
Right. I mean.
I would make a motion that we approve the application based on the fact that it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It decreases the non-conformity situation with regard to the accessory structure on the property and the new location is actually less non-conforming and further from the property line than the original building.
Do I have a second on that?
I will second that.
Any further on this? All those in favor of this application to be approved?
Aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
We have one opposed.
Who opposed?
No, I I voted in favor.
I think you heard somebody catching up over the approvals.
Oh, okay.
I'll do it over again, just to be sure.
Yeah, actually, you know what, Josh, if we take a roll call, do a roll vote, that'd be better.
That that means I have to remember who's on and who's not.
You want me to call the names?
Yeah, would you do that? All those in favor of this motion, Mark will call, roll call.
Okay. Josh Friedman?
Yes.
Kathy Newlin?
Yes.
Warren McKenzie?
Yes.
Is Michelle, Michelle Crips?
Yes.
Jason Mariewski?
Yes.
Okay, Danielle is the most.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Okay, so we're good.
Unanimous, no opposed, the motion has like very approval has been made. Okay, so we're going to go to the next one. ZBA dash twenty dash three, Michael Kemsky and Dawn Kusikemsky, owners and applicants, James and our LS agent, at twenty-five Riverside Drive, R twenty zone. Any comments or state anything from the board?
I would make.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I would make a motion to approve the.
Somebody else has something to say, let's let's discuss that first. Can we do that?
Yes, yes, I was about to say, I drove by it and looking at it and then seeing the picture that you brought up, it really does look a bit dilapidated and an improvement. It looks like the footprint is going to be pretty much in the same place and where the picture was taken on the side yard overlooking Mrs. Lord's property, I think the same structure is going to be where the existing structure is right now, my understanding. So I think that I would approve it to improve the neighborhood and as far as the garage across the street, that has no bearing on what they're proposing for this property.
Okay. I I would just make a statement too, I drove by it as well. It's, looks like it's in keeping with the neighborhood. There are other properties that have buildings that close to the street as well. So is there any other comments or statements before we entertain a motion?
Just that, just that the the law already has such dimensions that don't comply with an R twenty zone, it'd be hard, it'd be hard to do anything else with it.
That's hard to.
Make a motion that we approve the application based on the fact that it's in keeping with the neighborhood and it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mark will call, Mike roll call.
Josh Friedman?
I approve.
Kathy Newlin?
Yes.
Warren McKenzie?
Yes.
Michelle Crips?
Yes.
Jason Mariewski?
Yes.
Okay, roll taken.
So unanimous, there's no opposing. Motion carries.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
We got to go through any old business?
We have no old business.
New business?
No new business.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have a meeting next month?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Don't need a roll call for that.
No opposed, we're, public carries close.
Goodbye, everyone. Have a good August.
You as well.
Goodbye.